You said it now.
No, I did not.
Okay, just clarify.
Okay. Nice not have to worry about getting the meeting over to get home, so we can't, we won't be in the snow.
Hmm. Yep. Isn't everybody already home?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's nice to be home.
Yeah, she can drag it out.
No, I'm not gonna drag it out. No, I mean, I.
Sorry, this guy, this thing hurts so much, you know?
Oh, God.
Well, stop lifting it above your head.
She's supposed to do that, well.
Josh is trying to say something and we are streaming live on Facebook.
Go ahead, Josh, start.
I've got seven o'clock if you guys are ready.
We're ready.
Yep.
All right, count from five, the two and the one are silent, and five, four, three.
Good evening, this is the first meeting of the planning commission for the year 2021. The first thing we will do is have the pledge of allegiance to the flag, so if everybody will stand and pledge, please. If you're able, if you're able, yeah, Lyndy, you can stay seated, and I am too, because I'll fall off my chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're good, awesome. Okay, first order is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was November 20th 30th. Are there any additions or corrections?
I just noticed one typo, it's on page two, number five, it's under subdivisions, and it's just, instead of east-west, it says east-west park.
Thank you.
Second sentence, all the way to the right.
Yeah.
Only thing I noticed.
Okay. See, none others do I have a motion to approve with that correction.
Also move.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved. There, the next thing we're going to do is, not on the agenda, we're going to have Steve Demoter, who is part of the growth task force, to give a 15-minute presentation about the survey. I know it's on the website, don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but since we're starting to talk about the master plan, we're going to have Steve give us an overview of that survey, so Steve, take it away.
All right. Well, Happy New Year, everybody, thank you for the invitation to share the results of our 2020 community survey. I know our time is brief, I will hit the high points of information, this is already available on the town website, and then also hit some additional new analysis, so if we go to the next slide, number two. So again, the objectives for this evening are to review some of the high-level results of likely most interest to the planning commission, highlight some new results from additional analysis that I have prepared, and part of it is in response to some questions we got from the town council from November 2nd, when we presented the survey results. I want to give you food for thought and make you think a little bit. As a reminder, I mean, it's, it's natural behavior to say, hey, the survey's done, it was a good job, that's done, let's move on, but it's an important point, and that is that this survey and the data within it is really a living resource that can be used continually by the town as we move forward throughout the year. And so we want to use the results from the survey, the analysis we do of those results through different analytical lenses to help us not only understand what's behind the positive themes of the survey, but where there were some negative feedback, we want to understand what's driving those. The big picture is, we want continuous improvement, we want to move the town in a direction that our citizens would like us to move in. So my value proposition to town government in terms of an organizational culture perspective is that greater utilization of the survey data combined with other town information in a holistic manner can achieve a more informed decision-making process and improve other processes and outcomes from the town. Next slide. At least cursor up a little bit, John. Okay, I'll hit the high points. On views on the Mount Airy quality of life and various attributes, our respondents ranked that 99% viewed the overall quality of life in Mount Airy as good to very good to excellent. We looked at the top five positive and most negative attributes that were identified. The top attribute was Mount Airy small-town environment, followed very closely by valuing the importance of safety within the town. On the negative attributes, these were comprised of shopping, employment opportunities, traffic, recreational facilities, and municipal services. So, a lot of positive views about life in Mount Airy, and then some negative attributes. We also did a comparison of the 2020 survey with the 2007 survey, where we had question overlap, and for this particular question, the results very much align with what was found in the 2007 survey. Next slide, we can cursor up.
All right, Steve, you want to run the, I'll get, I'll get it up here, I'm actually gonna go down, so.
There we go, oh, okay.
You're telling me what to do.
Stay next.
I'll say.
Say next, like I asked you to.
Next, all right, so, what were the top issues and needs identified by our citizens? Lack of commercial growth and improvements in the downtown area, along with traffic safety on Main Street, were the top two major concerns requiring urgent action. Vandalism of personal property, crime and drugs, combined with the overall strength of the larger Mount Airy Commercial District economy were the top two areas needing some improvement and some action, and then lack of affordable housing, housing, combined with the level and pace of residential growth, reviewed as the top two issues, really not being an issue and not needing any type of action. Next slide. Okay, focusing on the commercial aspect, in terms of preferences for where folks wanted to see more commercial business growth, there was a clear preference for having additional growth concentrating in existing commercial areas. 76% of individuals ranked that as the number one priority. However, there was some openness to the identification of new areas. If you look at the chart, you can see 51% ranked it number two, and then 26% ranked it number three, in terms of priority. So that means they are open to some new, new areas. Additionally, if you look at no additional businesses needed, that really wasn't a number one ranking, it was, it was a number three ranking, so, big picture, that tells us people are open to more business, they want to see it in existing areas, and they do feel like some additional businesses are needed. A related question about what types of businesses do people want to see? Small retail stores and restaurants were the top choices. Hotels received the least amount of interest. These results are also very consistent with the results from 2007. I do want to note, if you hold on there, that there are a lot of written comments provided, we got over 900 comments in writing. About 50% of all surveys had written comments. We've been those comments into different topical areas, and the areas of improvements to the downtown, the old bank building came up, along with comments about the frustration with the slow pace of action in addressing the areas, those were some major themes in the written comments related to businesses. Next slide. All right, there were several topic-specific questions on the survey regarding the connection of Center Street, enabling a direct passage from Route 27 to Main Street by, in favor of two-to-one, there was a favorable response that that should be done, about 30% of the people said they weren't sure, and they wanted more information to make a decision. Next slide. On the question of the Flatiron Building, there were several options available, there were three options that were selected almost evenly, each got about 22% of a ranking, and those were removing the building and stabilizing the land with no kind of structure, just, just landscaping, along with replacing, the second one was replacing with a multi-use park-like setting with some benches and maybe a small plaza. The third option that got about the same amount, but a little bit higher, was to replace it with a larger structure as recommended by the consultants, with all the benefits noted in the survey, so those are the three that got the most, most, most rankings, all at about the same level of support. Next. Okay, on the topic of the Harrison Lysier property, a little over 50% were in favor of bringing that into the town with the pros noted in the survey question. Only 6% said they prefer the property to be developed under county control. 16% said they prefer that the property remain as is, with nothing done to it, and 26% of citizens said they really didn't have enough information and they were looking forward to opportunities to provide more input and some public hearings to learn more about it. Next slide. Okay, on views on the need for affordable housing, residents were asked to select up to three choices, with ranking at number one as the most desired. So, the thing that jumps out here is that the option, I do not support any additional affording housing options, was selected as, as the number one ranking of 953 individuals. Responses in rank order after that were preference for single-family homes and townhomes, then condos, then apartments. It is notable that of the 953 people who said, I don't support any additional housing, 88% of those individuals ranked that as their number one choice, so that's a very strong opinion about whether or not additional affordable housing may be needed. And that's reinforced by some of the results of other questions that, that we're asking, kind of the same question in some different ways. Next slide. Okay, this is a table that's out of the survey report, and this shows a comparison of the questions and responses from 2007 and those of the 2020 survey. And you can see in the table, there are some options that were a little different across years, but the same general types of questions were being asked, and you can see it's almost identical in terms of, of preference. No additional affording housing, housing needed was ranked as number one in both surveys, and then followed by what you see in the table. So, very consistent. So hopefully, this information, along with the other questions and results of the survey, give you a good basis for understanding what the citizen views are regarding this topic. Next slide. Okay, this is a, this is a new piece of analysis. As I talked about, you can look at, you can look at the survey results through various lenses, and because we have data on location, we've asked people to identify where they resided in the town. We can look at this question by location. So this is a, an illustration of for each location within the town, each neighborhood, that we've been people into, based on what they said, this is a percentage by location of how people felt about this being a major issue, needing some improvement, or not being an issue at all. So I'll let you look at that offline, but, but you can get a sense for different sizes of communities, townhouse communities versus single-family home communities, and maybe, you know, how that layers into people's thinking about what, what were the top issues or not.
Steve, you've got about five minutes left.
Okay, next slide. All right, here's an example of another way to look at that same information. We, we, we collected information by how many years the length of time that people lived in Mount Airy, so we can look at the same question by how long people have been in the town. So I'll hit this quickly, but this is an interesting note here. If you look at the top bar, which is not an issue, you see the various breakouts of how long people have been in Mount Airy and, and what percentages. So look at the not an issue, and then look at the individuals who identified this as a major concern. The group of people that have been living here greater than 20 years represents 66% of those people who said it's a major concern, whereas it's only 35% and not an issue. So you can see how, how things shift over each, each of the, the options. And I just think it's interesting that for those people who do think it's an issue, most of those people, 66%, are people who have been living here a very long time, not the people who have just moved here, but the people who have been here a very long time. Next slide. Okay, I'll hit this quickly. There was a question about top safety concerns and police performance, most people in the town think the police department's doing a great job. A small percentage think that it needs improvement, and of that small percentage, Twin Ridge represented about 16% of that, so it was a real relatively higher slice of people from Twin Ridge that had a negative view. And this is one of the things that came up at the town council meeting, people wanted to know, well, what might be driving this opinion, so I'm gonna get to that. Next slide. And the overall top safety concerns in the town, drug violations and activity was the top safety concern across everyone in Mount Airy. Relative to all other types of safety issues, traffic was also a concern, and I'll move to the next slide.
You got four minutes left.
All right. So, some additional analysis, let's take a deeper dive into the safety issues. So what might be driving some of the safety concerns? So, drugs was identified as the most serious safety concern across the whole town. Of those people who identified drugs as number one, as their highest safety concern, the highest percentage of those individuals comes from the Nottingham neighborhood. I'll now go down to burglary and assault and theft and fraud. Of those individuals who ranked these categories as their number one safety concern, Twin Ridge had the highest percentage in each of these two categories relative to all other neighborhoods, and when you look at it by location, there's definitely a relationship between these safety issues and Twin Ridge. Twin Ridge had the highest concerns about these areas than any other neighborhoods in the town. And we go to the next slide. And this is picking up on what I just said, if you look at each location by location for this question, this is an example, you've got Nottingham versus Twin Ridge, they're both fairly large developments, large number of people contributed to the survey, and this shows, there's the picture for Nottingham, you've got 41% that think that drugs is the biggest safety issue. Now look at the Twin Ridge picture, you can see how that's totally shifted. Burglary and theft and assault make up 61% of the concerns in Twin Ridge. So again, it's an example of how you can look at the information, big picture versus by location and learn things. Next slide. So what are some of the things that the town could do to better understand what's driving the safety concerns and how to respond to it? Well, you could look at the police department's actual data on service calls, patrol records, crime events by location. You could compare that to the perceptions of the individuals in the survey, to see if there's alignment on that. For theft and burglary concerns in Twin Ridge, you can pick up safety patrols in the neighborhood, the police could be giving outreach in terms of neighborhood watch programs, and these are measurable activities, over time, if these things were done, you could see if, if these concerns improved within the Mount Airy, within the Twin Ridge development. Next slide. So lastly, big picture, is Mount Airy on the right track or the wrong track, there was a clear view, 91% that Mount Airy is headed in the right direction. For those individuals who think it's in the wrong direction, Main Street, Park Avenue, and Mount Airy East each had a relatively higher percentage of respondents who pick wrong direction compared to all other locations. So that's, that's a very whirlwind view of the survey, again, the full reports on the website, an overview, detailed presentations on the website. This presentation here highlights much of that and gives you some new information, and we are going to continue to do some analysis, for example, on traffic safety and other topical areas, and report that back as that gets completed. So, thank you. You have any questions, if you can do follow-up? If you have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I have a comment, Steve, that's a, that's very, very dreamy music.
That was the timer ending.
Thank you, I started talking, whoever did that, appreciate it. Steve, that was a really good, nice data analysis and explanation of it in the very short time that you had, I, I'm, I was quite impressed. Uh, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We did have two comments, Steve. Apparently, new data is not on the website yet, or at least Gina doesn't have it to put on the website, so you might want to make sure that gets on the website. And I do have one question. When you were asking about affordable housing, what did you give them as the definition of affordable housing?
That's a good question.
Well, you know, we, we talked about that within the survey team, and we did not provide a definition, we, we left it to be self-interpretive, so, you know, first it was just.
Kind of skews that, because.
Well, well.
I mean, affordable housing is not Section 8 housing, so, and I think that that's, but that's, that was your option to do that.
Right, if you, let, let me just complete my thoughts, so there's one question that just said, is lack of affordable housing an issue, do you think it is yes or no, among all other issues? But then on the question, a more detailed question on affordable housing, as you saw, there were options given, you want single-family homes, apartments, condos, townhouses, and you saw what their views were.
Right.
On that, so that's, that's, that's the way the questions were presented.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, this is a living document, and it, it will be referred to. You know, we're gonna keep it in our mind when we're working through the master plan, and I do appreciate all the work that your, your committee and commission has done on this, and appreciate a lot of what you've done. So continue the good work, and thanks for, uh, thanks for bringing that to us.
All right, thank you very much, thanks, John, for the slide help.
Great job.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Are there any, do we have anyone out there? Dana, do you have anybody?
There are no comments on Facebook, and I don't see any hands raised for the attendees.
Okay. So then we'll move on to the Carol and Frederick County planners. If I'm not mistaken, I think Tim said he would be back in February. But I know Hannah, you're here.
Yeah, sure.
It's like you're stuck with me.
That's okay.
I hope everybody had a good holiday. Just some updates at the county. Um, the county commissioners approved 18 of the commercial industrial employment campus rezoning requests. Parcel 20 adjacent to the annexation was denied, so they are, they're not able to rezone, and that's it for that property. We are forwarding the residential text amendments to the planning commission next Wednesday evening, and they will begin their discussions about the residential text amendments that we've been working on. We've had several, several webinars that are available online, if you want to look at that. But I will be providing updates about what kind of questions they've been discussing with the residential text. And lastly, we received the Harrison Lysier annexation resolution on Friday. We forwarded all of the comments, all of the annexation maps, plaits, and zoning waivers to the state and other departments in the county. Just some dates that we are asking some people to attend from the town just to answer questions. We are introducing the annexation to the planning commission next Wednesday evening. It's not really necessary for somebody from the town to be there, because it's not meant for discussion, it's just an intro for them. But moving forward, on March 3rd at 6:00 PM, the planning commission will dive deeper into the annexation. So if somebody from the town could be available that evening to answer any questions they may have, that would be awesome. But most importantly, it's important for somebody from the town to be available for the county commissioners and their discussions. We have dates with them on March 4th, March 11th, and March 18th, if needed. All of the 4th, the 11th, and 18th will take place during their open session, that starts at 9:00 AM, and as we get closer to that, we can give you guys the links as we get them, and we'll let you know their agenda and those type of things. So by then, we will have their decision on the zoning waiver, and you guys will be all set for the public hearing, if all goes well for it. And we've been keeping in touch with John about any questions that we have with the annexation packet, but I think all is well for now.
Okay, great, thank you for that information, does anybody have any questions for Hannah?
Hannah, the, the March 3rd meeting, is that public comment or just a discussion with, among the commissioners?
Um, March 3rd is for planning commission, that'll be their discussion, but public comment is welcome at the introduction next Wednesday, February 3rd, and then the month later, March 3rd. They're, on our agenda at the bottom, there's a phone number for public comment, they can call in.
Okay.
And public comment is always accepted at the open sessions with the commissioners as well.
Okay.
I have a question as well. Should, because it is a joint resolution, should we also have a representative from the IDA at these meetings as well, or are we, how should we, I guess I would defer to Tom.
I'm not sure about that, I know for past annexations, especially with the commissioners, it's just been representatives from the towns. I don't know if this is different, I can get back to you about that, because that is a good question. But for whoever feels comfortable going and answering questions from the planning. But for whoever feels comfortable going and answering questions from the planning commission and the board, whoever you guys feel like sending, it's not anybody specific that needs to go.
Okay, we'll rally the troops and come up with a plan. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem, thanks guys.
Thank you. Thanks for your continued support and attendance at the meetings, we appreciate it, thank you so much.
Always, not gonna get rid of me that easy, I guess.
Good, good. Okay, the next item, and by the way, John, when is the, the, they tentatively scheduled the public hearing for Harrison Lysier, when was that scheduled? When is that scheduled?
It's March twenty third currently at the Activities Building at the Fire Department's Carnival Brown.
Okay, so it looks to me like we won't be having it then because the county commit. Well, no, I guess we could, the county commissioners are hearing the fourth, eleventh and the eighteenth if needed, so I, I'll have to check to see if, if that's time enough. Because doesn't it, we have to post it again for the public hearing. So.
Well, your advertisement doesn't require the county's response, county need only respond before the hearing.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we have, have it up and posted when it should be so that we don't run out of time.
Right, and my understanding from talking to the county is that we'll be getting written comments that they probably won't be present at that public hearing, but they might have a written comments to be possibly read into the record.
Okay, great.
Both the state and the county.
And that's going to be March the twenty third?
Yep, it's six P M, I think is what it's slated for, I think, right, seven.
Okay.
Uh, I have it for seven thirty.
Thank you, seven thirty.
Okay. That'll be a good thing to work out logistically. The next item is the introduction and discussion of ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty, it's the creation of a new section of ninety eight dash sixty two and it's entitled Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement, or the D R R A. Uh, and I'm going to yield to Tom to go over this. Ordinance, Tom.
So this is a follow up to the enactment of the M X D ordinance that you all spent a long time dealing with. As did council, as you will recall, as both recommended by this body and as enacted. It contemplates in the process, the process of the development review, potentially. The town entering into a D R R A with the developer mainly because the development review or the period of time from during development review until breaking ground in a mixed use is likely to be a long time. And so you all recommended and the ordinance has enacted D R R A, that is a function of state code. But what a, a town must do is pass what's called enabling legislation, that is to say, an ordinance that authorizes the town to enter into these if the town so desires. And these terms really are all set forth by state statute, there's not a lot to change or fiddle with. Most of, in fact, all the terms really are come right out of the state code verbatim. So there's not a lot of play there, one area that you may want to consider, as I was asked to draft it or as I drafted it, I drafted it for the M X D and M X U C C. Because that's, you know, what prompted this, I believe that Councilman, Councilman Munder is going to suggest a change that it not be limited to any particular district, but rather authorize the town, again, in an appropriate situation and when the town agrees to do it, to enter into a D R R A, so that, that's the purpose of this, the purpose overall is to, in exchange for extracting responsibilities from the developer to also essentially freeze the things like the A P F O requirements. Developers so that if that changes by the time he's at the end of the final review process, you know, the rules of the game haven't changed, so that's the purpose of this.
And also the fact that these developments can go over many, many, many years, many administrations and it keeps everything kind of packaged as one, so it doesn't have to keep being brought up.
Okay. So, so Tom, question, I read that there's a, a five year term on the, the original D R R A.
There's a limit to how long they can last, so.
Okay, so if for whatever reason, development takes longer than that, it would have to be renewed or at least revisited?
And that's, that's by provision of state law as well.
Anybody else have any questions for Tom, any discussion at this point?
I found this to be a very practical ordinance, I think there's a lot of win-win in it. For the town as well as for the developer, I think it's, it's fair and equitable and it makes an awful lot of sense.
Okay, thanks Bill, anyone else?
I know when I looked at it the other day, I had a couple of questions, but I didn't mark them, but I think it was. I think it had to do with towards the end where it says the town can change things if it wants to, or something.
Upon a showing of, you know, substantial, whatever the jingle is in there, that again comes directly from state code.
Okay, I was just thinking the developers might be concerned, but.
Already has, yeah. They emailed and I said, sorry, that's, it's in state code.
Okay, that's okay. And so is, yeah, so that was pretty much. Okay, that looks good, thanks.
Yeah, it does, it's nice when it's in state code that makes our job a little easier, that's for sure. Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, they're asking us for a recommendation to be sent back to the town council, so I'd like to have a motion. I know we don't have to because this is just a recommendation, but just to put it on the record. A motion to that we are going to send this back with a favorable recommendation to the council.
Do I, can I ask a question first of Tom? So Tom, since you said that Carl might be making that change, which is a good idea, I think, does that need to be?
Yeah, you can, if, if the consensus is to recommend that change and otherwise recommend, you know, it's a recommendation.
Okay. So is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion, I motioned that we what's the word, that we recommend to the town council that they approve this ordinance and with changes suggested by councilperson Munder, that it apply to all or, I guess, all, all zones in the town.
All districts, yeah.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we give a favorable recommendation back to the town council on ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty with the noted changes to make this developmental rights across the board for the different zones, all those in favor? Please signify by saying I raise or raise your hand so I can see. Those opposed? Okay, we're sending it back unanimous approval, that's awesome.
Cool.
Alrighty. Next, the time has come.
Walrus said to speak of many things.
So the next thing, I'm gonna kind of yield to John here, we're going to start discussing the twenty twenty three master plan, the timeline, the scheduling of the work and what, what is, how we're going to implement this, John?
Yes ma'am, thank you Roxanne, so, yep, it's twenty twenty three master plan startup time, so we're trying to sort of as staff level we went through and, and you'll see a copy of this, the comprehensive twenty twenty three comprehensive master plan, we try to do a tentative schedule for different tasks, trying to meet with all the different plant, all the different commissions within the town, excuse me. And my, my intentions are to be able to get them a copy as I did you of a master plan for them to mark up with their appropriate sections. And we're trying to then schedule public work sessions every month of this coming year. And the intentions are to make them the first Thursday of every month, the council room would be open if we go back to in person meetings and the Zoom and, and our Facebook Live would be available for those same scheduled work sessions. And that'll give the opportunity for each of the different commissions to be able to come in front of the planning commission and, and work as a group to sort of go through their appropriate sections of the master plan and make sure we're including everybody in all the different commissions on the town, in the town. So I don't know if we want to really go through it month by month. This is really just more of a tentative and flexible schedule, hopefully the big thing is to try to make sure that we're meeting the requirements for the county and state to have their, all their information gathered and to them at appropriate times as well. If anybody has any questions on this, and we might, you know, we might modify how this is laid out too because it's, you know, it's, we're looking at, you know, four hundred and fifty days basically, you know, so we're sort of going through in the first fifty days, we're going to try to hit February, March and April and May and we're going to try to hit the, you know, going through the master plan section by section, chapter by chapter. Martina, unmute yourself.
Um, I've never gone through this process before, so for these, these upcoming meetings, what exactly is expected of us, we're just meant to listen or should we be gathering information for people or what do we need to do to help with these meetings?
Well, let me ask a question to the people that are on the planning commission currently, who was here for the previous master plan?
Okay.
No buts?
Yep.
I was here, but I wasn't a member yet.
You don't count Roxanne, then.
Thank you.
No, so I've never been through a master plan, so we're, we're all going to be sort of relying on some of the past members who have more experience. So can you answer, Martina, to, what did we have work sessions before and how did they work?
Well, I can give you a little bit of background. Before we started, and it was the better part of a three or four year process, it took us to do the, the two thousand thirteen update. We went back and looked at the previous mountain area master plan updates, and I think two thousand thirteen was like the fifth one. And, and what, and it was hard to find the detail for all of them, but what we did find suggested the lion's share of the effort was made with simply doing an update, but there was no follow through. There was no implementation, there was no tracking in terms of follow through as to making that happen. Or at least, what did you learn from it, what has changed and so forth? So part of what we did was to start a process. And we said it made sense to do a fairly comprehensive town survey as a beginning look to see what's changed in terms of of our residents' opinions and preferences and so forth and so on, especially for key topic. And secondly, that we reach out and involve all the commissions and the boards. And the planning commission actually did that ourselves, we invited all of the other commissions and boards to be involved. Because when you look at all the sections of the, of the master plan outline, really, they're all involved. All of our commissions and boards have particular, have specific specialties and, and in-depth understandings of, of various issues that affect the town operation, so it made sense for them to be involved and be contributing what they felt were the initiatives, the goals, the objectives we need to be pursuing, where we are in terms of moving those along. It also made sense in terms of involving all of, all of those groups to begin with, for them to also then be involved in contributing and tracking, so what's our progress on the implementation of it? And so we put that in effect, and it was Heather Smith, for the most part, who helped craft this spreadsheet, which is pretty darn impressive when you look at tracking and the reporting for each of the chapters and so forth.
That's what I dropped off this morning, I apologize for not getting that in the initial package, so I, I do apologize, but I did get that out to everybody today.
Thank you.
So I apologize.
So I think there's, there's a, there's a feeling that, that at least some of those processes made sense. And we, we gained insight and we gained progress in terms of trying to further what we proposed in that two thousand thirteen master plan. That's probably the idea behind at least some of the initiatives to continue those similar approaches and processes.
We'll have one, one, I'm sorry, one thing, Lindy, I'm so sorry. I did not get you a copy, I did email it to you the end of last week, but you're like, you're like shell shocked, so I apologize. I forgot to get on your road this afternoon.
Oh, far away.
Yeah, I know, it's really far away, sorry.
The closest one to the town hall, so I apologize, and you were home, so.
Yep.
So I was just gonna, jumping off, jumping from where Phil left off, I think, I think that in terms of getting the, the commissions involved, I like, I like what John said a few minutes ago because last time it seemed like things got sent out to them, maybe Heather sent them out or maybe we occasionally did, but it wasn't some very organized process where they were really, you know, they didn't, they didn't come to our meetings, they didn't engage, you know, so it's sort of like we'd send something to them and they would or would not review it and would or would not send back comments, so I think the idea of actually having it more structured and, and participate when we're, once we get to whatever, I mean, we can send it out ahead of time, but whatever, you know, once we're at the spot, whether it's streets and roads or whatever, then we really have an, an interaction, because I feel like, and I could be remembering this wrong, but that maybe there were also some complaints by the commissions, even though we were like, hello, you know, please give us comments and so I'd like, and I think you did mention that, John, I think you did have that idea that they actually, if we're on Zoom, then they have to be on Zoom, but, you know, that we actually engage. And.
That's my intentions, is I'm gonna try to actually go to their Zoom meetings and present it to all their members, give them a, a full copy of a markable unit they can mark in and then hopefully have them give us comments back in a timely manner.
Yeah, we want them to come though, we want them, we want, yes, we want them to participate, so maybe we set a workshop, you know, in March and whichever thing we're on, we say whatever that commission is, then they come to the workshop.
Right, and my intention, right, and that's my intention, so I'm gonna hopefully forty five days prior to that have met with them at their meeting.
Okay, good.
So that then I can give them hard copies, so they have time to review it and to be, give input back at that work session, that's, that's the hopes.
Good, good, and Martina, I, I think also, you know, some of the stuff as Bill was saying, some of it's going to be kind of standard and then it will be more like an update, there's some new sections, right Roxanne, and state legislature passed some new requirements. But because we've done, even though we haven't implemented this But because we've done, even though we haven't implemented this in a, you know, it's been maybe more seasonal, but whatever, but we have done a fair amount of stuff and with the downtime master plan and all this other, you know, so some of this will be, it will be a lot different going, going forward. But I didn't know anything about it last time I did it, cuz I was new, so it was very interesting, very timely.
Again, you guys have made a great foundation for us moving forward. Um, so all your hard work back in 2013 is gonna pay off now for us to be able to move forward to the 2023. So hats off to you guys.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I would suggest beyond that is actually taking the time to read the 2013 master plan. It looks thick and overwhelming, but it's actually full of really interesting information.
Lindy, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Oh, you went back, you unmuted yourself, you muted yourself again. Lindy, you're muted.
Okay, so I would go back even and look at the, what was astounding in the previous master plans, that, that was, was not accomplished. And that's what Bill's referring to, that was really awful, that it was not accomplished. But going back even further than history and just kind of looking at where we started from, and then back to 2013 and then now, I think that the history is worth reading.
Yep. There's uh, John, there's another piece that, that we implemented, and we did it on an annual basis, at least through 2018, maybe 2019. And that was an annual information exchange between representatives of the commissions and the board. And the whole point there was, in addition to what they were submitting in terms of progress on the action plan, this, the spreadsheet that you, you have started to distribute. We also had an in-person sharing of that information. And uh, and all the group, and that just cemented the um, you know, the, the contribution, the partnership between all the groups to continue to work on this, and uh, it's very challenging. This is a, a big enterprise. Uh, some of it goes quickly, some of it drags.
And I even thought, I, I thought even uh, the first step is possibly doing that joint commission uh, webinar. Um, to sort of, sort of get their wheels thinking. Uh, and that's why I was even thinking about being the February, the February 4th uh, meeting, being that, being a joint, sending that to all the joint commissions and saying, you know, um, please attend if you can. And, and so we can start the discussion uh, for this up and coming master plan, cuz it is beneficial uh, to the town. And it gives us, it gives us a roadmap ultimately uh, to where we wanna be, or where we hope to be.
I know there are things in the uh, 2013 plan that we did not complete, um, as Lindy had said. But do we, do we owe a reference as to why our minds may have changed? Because, you know, if you look in there, there were supposed to be like, you know, say gobs of uh, ball fields, sports complex, uh, ball fields. Um, we didn't address that, it has not been completed. So now, do we just move forward and say, you know, this is the new direction? Or do we, or do we find a way to address the fact that things have changed and that we uh, you know, that we are no longer addressing what was previously said? I think it owes some explanation as to what happened there, instead of just printing something new.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you Scott, I think that's a good idea. For, at least for history, explaining what would, what would happen, why.
Some of it was beyond the control, beyond our control that it didn't happen. And we should, I think, like you guys said, we should say, okay, yeah, it was going that way, but you know, the circumstances didn't allow it. I mean, I really think, I really like this. But that you've, the staff has put together, um, it's really awesome. Um, and then, but it, we also have to address the fact that we're going to be sending out letters or however we're going to be identifying um, property owners that want to do rezoning. Um, and we have to have the time for that, so, which I think is like task four. I'd like to address the workforce housing, I'd like to have a webinar uh, with the Maryland, our regional representative from the Maryland Planning Department to go over that with us, cuz it is pretty extensive. How we have to do that and what we have to do in order to put that in. You have it, you have it in June of 2021, so I guess that's okay. But I kinda like to have it before that, but.
Okay, um, would you like to see it more at the beginning, like you're saying, in the February, March? Or is that too early or?
I think that, I don't know, I'm gonna yield to everybody else what they feel.
I think that June 1 will come way sooner than you expect, and I think it's probably fine.
Okay, we'll leave it there then. Um, I will, I will also mention as an aside to this, you know, part of the MPCA, you know, we do educational webinars. Uh, we weren't doing them regional, but now we're doing them, you know, uh, virtually, so we're not selecting regions. We just put out the call. We are doing this winter. Is going to concentrate on uh, comprehensive planning and the different parts of it. So you will be getting um, information about those webinars, so that might help you, Martina, to help you to go through um, this and um, and help those that haven't been and those that have been, maybe they can um, attend as well. But I, I, I like this. Um, I think that uh, I mean, I'm all for the February 1st and the, keeping the first Thursdays of every month from 6 to 9. I think you should heavily suggest as to, at least to, at least one or two people from each commission should attend that.
Roxanne, I think that Thursday evenings are just easier, you know, you have, I mean, for those of us who work, you know, Monday to Friday, at least Thursday night, you can make it through, cuz having a long meeting on Monday makes the week awful. I'm sorry, it just does.
I, I agree, I know.
I give up Friday in the morning, so.
Yeah, and I think this is also, Don did some research, and this is really the only time that nobody is meeting, and that if we can and do eventually go back into town hall, that, the town hall will be available that night. So we won't have to keep moving it around. If we just set that as the date, um, then we know that it's there.
Well, and again, we can, we can, if we don't, we don't, if we don't utilize it, we don't have to, but at least it's set in stone and then it sort of secures our area. And I think, um, you know, I also wanna give points off to Deborah and Gina. They are the ones that sort of uh, tailored it down or smithed it down to, that's the day that's available um, throughout the month. So I appreciate their help as well.
Well, yeah, I do too. Um, I, so I'm, I'm aboard with this, I think this is great.
And again, so, you know, you know, tonight, I don't know, um, if you guys wanna just sort of look over the implementation schedule yourselves and see if you have any comments. And Lindy, I will drop off a copy tomorrow on your front porch, so you have a hard copy, I do apologize.
That's okay, you can, you can see how pretty the house now looks outside, it's all green.
It was beautiful the last time I was there, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully it don't slide, hopefully it don't slide into it on the snow and ice.
Yeah, we're definitely a Christmas house these days.
Okay.
Alright, cool. John and, and Scott, um, a comment on the um, implementation spreadsheet. Because we utilized, we attempted to utilize, and hopefully we'll do it even better this time, the partnership among all the commissions and the boards, you know, to draft this. I think that's the starting point where we invite them um, to say, and that's going to be the approach, that partnership approach, that we're gonna try to use for the 2023 master plan update. And challenge them to go back uh, into this spreadsheet, and there were assignments for various commissions and boards and so forth for virtually every one of these chapters. And a starting point could be their evaluation of why there was the progress or lack of progress. Okay, in terms of the initiatives and the objectives, um, um, primary actions that were, were forecasted or suggested. And um, where we are as a town, as a result, what they feel makes the most sense going forward. What would they propose in that regard? I think it's the starting point. Yeah.
And again, I think, I think back to Scott was saying, uh, an explanation, if, if there is one, why? Why they didn't hit the benchmark? Is it because we didn't have, we didn't have land to develop into baseball fields? Well, that might be the answer, you know, and, but at least then that says, says that we need to buy more land to be able to make more ball fields.
Well, Harrison Lashir is now on its way, so.
If you also remember, we had asked Heather to update us quarterly on how the commissions were doing on, doing on the master plan, and we never, ever got that.
Yeah, I don't think they, she was getting it from them, quite honestly.
I think, you know, I'm sure that every.
Double times, and it never got answered.
I'm sure that everything that they got, did not get accomplished um, in the 2013 master plan or on those action item list has a good excuse. But we, we have to make sure that it's, it's legitimate, because you, you know, just kind of not getting to it doesn't really cut it for a master plan. Um, there are a lot of good excuses, like the ball fields, uh, there, you can, there's probably about 10, 10 reasons why the ball fields didn't get developed. But, but those, we have to publicize those legitimate excuses or those legitimate reasons. Not, you know, hey, uh, the town just didn't have the resources, cuz that's, that's busted.
Um, so as, as you will see, um, once we begin this process, we're not gonna be including in this document explanations for why things did not get done. That is just not gonna be the appropriate place to, to have that information. Now, certainly if people come and they wanna discuss, whatever. Um, but if you look back at the prior plans, these are all building blocks and processes and objectives and goals. They're not like, we're definitely gonna have this done in four years. That is not what this is.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, right, Leslie, but the thing is, what were we thinking 10 years ago when we were gonna develop 11 ball fields? So I think we owe some, we, we owe some explanation as to what we were thinking and why it didn't get done. I understand that you don't wanna.
And we'll say now Harrison Lashir is on its way, and that's where all the fields are.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good reason, but there's a lot of things in there that don't have as good of reasons. And so what I was saying is that, yeah, we just can't schlup over it and pretend that in 2013, we were so crazy, we didn't know what was going on.
Well, we can discuss it after, as it's going on, as we're doing.
Pam has something.
A couple of things. The way I understand it, the master plan is a guide. It, it's not, we're gonna do absolutely everything in this guide over the next 10 years. It's aspirational. It's a roadmap, right. Um, but what I really wanted to say is, John, this spreadsheet with what Bill is referencing, um, the problem that I have with it, each task or goal isn't assigned to an actual commission. So each commission kinda has to go through and be like, oh, I think that's mine, or that is mine. Like, each commission, commission should get this list, but only their action items, nothing else.
I think we had, we had one of these that had it, the assignments.
We did.
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah, there were assignments to each.
Yep.
There were assignments, so I don't know where that, I don't know where that sheet is.
I will look.
And I will too.
Of the uh, implementation.
Because I do remember us going through this and saying, okay, this is this one, this is that one. So we did have that, and I understand what you're saying, Scott. And um, but yes, we need to address, okay, it wasn't done, but we don't put it, we don't put it in the, in the master plan.
It's not a diatribe, it doesn't have to be a diatribe of why things didn't get done. But, but if you think about it, you can't read the 2013 master plan and then be like, wait a minute. You know, uh, community center, what? Like, where did that go? That's not even in the 2023. Like, that, you can't do that, like 10 years ago.
Problem.
I understand it's a guide, and you don't have to do everything, but you can't just pretend that it, that it used to be a, a priority, and now it's just like not, like we just, we didn't, we just didn't know what we were talking about 10 years ago.
I, Scott, I agree with you that we wanna have a history of what, why. Just, just because if someone comes, next time I want, well, what, what, what happened? I think that that history is important. I agree with Leslie, that yes, it's not in the document, but just to, like, explain for the next mission, what happened? What, what was going on?
I know we had a commission for a community center for a long time.
Yes, we did.
You did.
Even I don't, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, and, and this is all, and yes, Scott, we will address that. But this is all also um, kind of put down, the procedure and the way you do it is also through, is also um, guided by the state.
Or, or, or the county, the, the, sorry, the town council.
Council.
They want to spend money on certain things, like our center. So, you know, it's like, we don't control the money, we don't control the money, we just.
Well, right, that's a good reason, but I, you know, I just, I think you understand my point is that you can't just pretend that it never happened. That's, there's no account, this is where the accountability falls through, because we're just gonna put random shit in there, and then people will be like, oh wow, they were gonna, you know, they, they were, they were gonna build an elevator to the moon, and they didn't. I wonder what happened to that? You can't just put random stuff in there, just because you thought it up.
Well, I don't think it was random stuff, it was in them, it was very well thought out. It's just circumstances that happen, you know, that stuff comes along. And that will, you know, will, hopefully we'll address that, and maybe some of the implementations or some of the things that are in the new one will help to um, eliminate that this time.
I actually think, more importantly, though, good point Scott, is that rather than concerning so much about what didn't get done, we say, now, we're putting this in and we wanna make sure it gets done, and we have like ways of holding ourselves and the town council and everybody accountable. And then also that the residents who want X to happen, then they can say, hey, you know, planning commission, town council, why, why aren't you doing this? So maybe there can be some.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more important to me than, than rehashing the history, is actually getting it, getting it done.
Right.
Right, so what I always found kind of interesting, this community overwhelmingly, even back to 2013, wanted a community center, wanted the ball field, wanted the, the sports complex. As, as far as I know, it's never even been addressed at the council level, you know, by anyone. And quite frankly, it should be a priority, like, that's what the community wants. I mean, we have a, you know, bigger things and other things to, to discuss as well, but you know, to me, that's pretty important.
There was also a 2012 community needs assessment, and um, that um, you know, that was a priority that popped out in that.
Well, what we now know is, we, if we get Harrison Lashir, then we have potential ball fields. Um, and then we have a defunct um, commission on community center, and maybe they can address the planning commission during this process, and we can figure out what went wrong and how to fix it. I know a lot of time and energy was put into it.
And again, we still gotta look at budgeting, like you're saying, baseball fields aren't cheap to put in. So we might have the land, but it might take five years or whatever to get the, to get them built.
Well, I think 11, I think 11 ball fields was aggressive anyway, but, but, I mean, I could have, I could have probably guessed how that one was gonna turn out. But, but we, that just shows you, we have to be more responsible about what we put in there.
That's true.
Alright, so I don't know if anybody else has any discussion, more discussion on the master plan? If you wanted to look at the implementation schedule, or if you guys wanna review it, and we can talk about it at the February meeting. Um, and possibly see, I'm not sure if we can get the joint commission uh, rallied that quickly uh, in a week, so I think that's. That would be rude. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking um, I'm thinking that we all look at the implementation schedule, I'll try to find the one that's uh, separated into commissions. Where our drive, and then um, forward them to all the commission members of those specific commissions.
John, I, I, I think it really would be valuable if there could be um, a virtual meeting of representatives of all the commissions and boards. You know, so there is the, that additional opportunity for clarification and buy-in and, and sharing what the objectives are going to be. and, and sharing what the objectives are going to be, how we hope to work together on it. Yeah.
Yep. I think, like you're saying, that might become March because, just because of timing wise, trying to get them all on board. And so I think that's probably what I'm going to shoot for March.
So our first Thursday meeting would be, workshop would be in March?
Well, really, I wanted to do February the fourth, but I guess I'm wondering if, you know, that might be when the state representative can be maybe possibly. But I don't know, that's really where we're at, is trying to determine if you think the schedule that we've come up with seems overly aggressive, under, underutilized.
I, I don't think it's overly aggressive. I mean, because some stuff's going to get bogged down. I mean, I remember, you know, but this will keep us closer to being on task.
But hopefully getting approved, hopefully getting it approved in the year that it's supposed to be in, not two years later.
Absolutely. I, I mean, we can reach out to her and see if she can, we, if she can be there Thursday evening, next Thursday evening. Because I really want, I really want us to go over that, make sure we have that. And there's something else to another bill that's, that's making, that's even putting, what was that? Because Joe talked about it, we had a conference call on Friday and there's another bill coming out that's even making affordable housing even more down, more kind of.
It's the, it's the source of income legislation that was passed.
That's it.
No matter what your income is, whether it's a voucher or social security disability or SSI, anyone who is renting property cannot, under state law, refuse to rent to a person with whatever their income is.
Yeah, no.
Limitations.
Yeah, I know that. I remember that bill, but this is something else that's attached to affordable housing first.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, I.
Okay, I'm not sure then.
Like Virginia has made affordable housing or section eight housing a protected class.
Okay, yeah, we don't have, but in a sense, though, in a sense, the source of income bill, you know, makes vouchers. Somewhat, but it's not like, it's not like a protected class, no.
Right, right. And, you know, there, there might be some, we were talking, there are possible ramifications for not having that in your, in, not addressing it in your master plan.
Well, I think we will be addressing it because of the chapter. And I think that this is a very, very long, complex conversation and it should be for the workshop, you know.
Yes.
Signed to it. So are you saying that this person, this expert is going to be presenting? I think I, I'm kind of missed what.
We were going to ask our regional planner for the department of, the Maryland Department of Planning to come and kind of explain it to us, yes.
Okay. So that's good. Does she need to come on February first or fourth or?
For the fourth, again, I mean, I think that might still be aggressive.
That's a little too.
So, yeah, so I, I'm all in favor of hearing from her, but, okay.
Let's, let's see how soon we could get her. Yeah. What the timing would be, yeah.
Well, we know that the first Thursday of the month is when we'll be able to meet with her, hopefully.
Okay.
Yep.
So it sounds like I got my work cut out with trying to, you know, find the, the ones that are associated to certain commissions and then get that forwarded off to their chair and all their members. Get Lindy her implementation schedule on her works tomorrow morning. And then, uh, you know, you know, seeing again, on the fourth, I mean, it might just be us.
As long as it's safe to drive, otherwise just wait till it's safe to drive, okay?
Come with a snow dog. He's going to come on the snow.
No shoes and everything.
Well, do we still want to meet on the fourth? I mean, does that give us time to kind of go over this and kind of, do we want to do our first meeting on the fourth?
I mean, that's a week and a half from now, right? So it's up to you. That's what I'm saying. I'm gonna, I'm gonna slot the time. If it's, if you think it's something we should do or you think it's too aggressive, then we can shoot for the first Thursday in March. It was just sort of to see what your thoughts were, how you guys wanted to move forward. I see what March is.
I mean, if we have general questions, we can, you know, kind of ash them out. Or, but I'm, whatever everybody thinks.
Maybe just put it on the calendar and have it there anyway. And if it's fifteen minutes or a half an hour or what, just do it anyway.
Okay. So we'll meet on Thursday, February the fourth at six o'clock.
Yep. And I'll send out a webinar invite very similar to what I did here. It'll be a calendar invite, so it'll go on your calendar. I don't know if you guys had more ease finding it or accessing it that way. So I'll make sure I do it that way. And we'll post it on the website as well. So if people want to come and, and talk or have comments, then they can do so.
So the next thing is, the next meeting will be February the twelfth, the commission will be February the twenty-second at seven. Does it look like seven P M?
Oh, you're saying on the February twenty-second?
Yeah.
Our regular commission meeting.
Regular commission meeting. Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Any, any upcoming things we need to know about, John?
Nope, it's just like you're saying, Hannah, saying that we're going to have to have a representative available. I figured I would attend the February third meeting, but again, it's just for introduction.
Yeah, March third.
Well, there's a February.
February, February third.
It's not about Carroll County.
Yeah, I'm talking about Carroll County, March, February third at six P M. They have, the planning, planning commission is going to be introducing the Harrison Lashir. So I figured I'd make myself available for that. Not that they'll have any questions.
Right.
But.
You can have questions, so apparently.
I can ask them questions.
I thought that was interesting that they denied parcel twenty.
Yeah.
Well, I think there was.
That's very interesting.
I think there was a lot of outcry from the adjoining property and, and I think the town was very vocal as well. And thank you to Mayor Pat, he was spearheading that. So, but I think, you know, I'm sure that they want to develop that parcel, but, you know.
And I think, right, and we heard, I heard at the council meeting that Chick-fil-A is planning to start in April, start doing whatever they need to do in April.
That is the tentative start time. Again, they have a demolition permit currently for the Pizza Hut. They have an approved site plan. They could, they could go level Pizza Hut tomorrow if they really wanted to.
Well, there's, there's still work. They haven't closed it yet. I don't know when they're going to do that, but.
Right. So does Pizza Hut know that?
Well, I'm, I'm sure they know that. I'm sure they know.
News on the, on the credit one building? Has any, has there been any interest in that since they left? Capital one, I mean.
I did have somebody call in who was kind of interested in the Chick-fil-A property at one point. And I, I kind of referred him to that parcel as well. And it was somebody who was representing for Roy Rogers. And I said, well, I have my thoughts on that, but I'll leave them to myself.
We used to have Roy Rogers here. Do you know where it was?
I do, where the Starbucks is now.
So as much as I love chatting with you all, I had a three-hour hearing before this meeting and I'm, I'm ready to go, so.
You want to adjourn, we'll adjourn.
You gotta make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? There was a second. Lindy seconded. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thursday the fourth.
Thank you.
Six P M.
Okay.
Thank you, Gina.